Okay, so this is also on Zoom. Are you in?
Yes. No, but let me just try and to tell it's up.
Yeah, tell it's up. And then we'll, as soon as that happens, we'll start the meeting and we'll start with minutes. Mr. David. One second.
I downloaded both of the maps for that. One nine seven to uh so that I could clear the two maps because when I tried to open it, it took forever to open.
Yeah.
So it's downloading.
That's exactly what I do. I can't if I try to just sit there. I get a good connection, but it's just, it must be the whole handshake or whatever.
So I just say, okay, download it. You're recording.
Right open.
The funny thing I saw about you said is the red outline came up when I first opened.
It's still recorded.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
So I said, okay.
Yeah, I get this.
Exactly.
Yeah, like you already.
Yeah, all right. All right. So David, we're gonna open our meeting up. Okay. Please want to read them? Go for minutes.
Okay.
Bruce, minutes please.
Do you want to say we put the meeting?
Meeting is being recorded.
Meeting is being recorded. Okay. First, our business is the meeting minutes from October 4th, 2022. I move that the CPC accept the meeting minutes dated October 4th, 2022. Have a motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Oh, no problem. Mr. Pierce?
Oh, aye.
Mr. Redlock?
Aye.
Mr. Hayden's aye. And Mr. Jeremiah and Ryan are ayes. All right.
Can we say congratulations?
Oh, yes, and congratulations to Jeremiah for having a baby. Well, his wife having a baby girl.
His wife did a whole.
We talked about that.
Was it last night?
I had to mention it.
Yeah. Halloween baby.
Halloween baby.
Really cool.
Yeah.
She's.
That would be a birthday. Do we remember?
No, I'm just saying.
Oh, yes. Yeah. All right, so. Let's see, that's probably carrying eight. Danielle, you wanna? We got 25 minutes.
We have a ZBA.
We want to do the ZBA?
Yeah, let's do the ZBA.
All right, let's do the ZBA. ZBA for 247 Main Street. This is interesting. This is where Central 21 is. Right. They're gonna have 10 vans. That means they're gonna have 20 vehicles at one time in that parking lot. Is there enough parking for them? And? And the real estate office?
No, I don't think the real estate office will be there anymore, will it? It looks like it. Looks, if you read further down there, it looks like there's a purchase and sale for Dave O'Neal to sell this to.
Oh, okay, to them.
Yep. Read the whole thing all the way, go all the way down.
I missed that. I didn't read most of it.
Yep. You know me, I cruise through it fast.
Yeah, no, you and your.
Speed reading.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so he's gonna contract the purchase for real estate. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, on that note.
I mean, we're just commenting.
Well, it's, yeah, it's. Yes, it's about, but how many, how many?
Is the question here whether or not we want a site plan? Is that question?
It's the recommendation to the ZBA.
Yep.
On their decision. If we wanna, if we would do a site plan, yeah, I just would say that too. But in terms of weighing in on.
I don't. If I may. I don't know that we would need a full-fledged site plan review, but I would like to see a plan that shows parking. For employee parking as opposed to commercial land parking. And it, it, um, it doesn't beg a traffic study, but there's two driveways offer close together right there.
Oh, yeah.
And.
It sure is.
And that's gonna be, I would imagine, there's gonna be substantially more traffic coming in and out of that location than there has been in the past. Unless they were the best real estate agents in the world and had 100 people coming today. But, you know, I mean, there's gotta be.
There, you know, too, if you get into it there, the aerial doesn't show at all parking. You can't see it.
Cause of trees.
But if you notice the throat of the curb cut, it's like three times, you know, allowed.
Cars probably eating.
Now, again, it's more than that.
Yeah.
So 40 and 50.
That was what was there.
But it's what's there. But I'm saying that's problematic too. If you, you have trucks coming out of there like vans and everything all different.
The only good thing about it is that that building sets back a ways.
Exactly.
So you've got good visibility.
It's not like right up there.
Yeah, you've got good visibility both ways pulling out.
But that's all I would say. I mean, just to make sure they have parking.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a change in use. So normally you would ask for a site plan for a change in use if there'd be a reason to not do that.
Yeah, it is a change in use there.
For a site plan review.
The building is quite large. It's how many employees are gonna be sitting in that building during the day.
Well, once it's got multiple floors, there's about eight different offices.
Three floors, right?
If there's only 10 vans and eight offices, everyone driver could have their own office.
The question is, are the people in those vans out all day? And are there other people gonna be in those offices?
Did you, Danielle, did you say you thought we should do a site plan review?
I'm just saying that those only says that for change in use in my work business, actually anywhere, it normally does require that. If you don't want to, you can, you probably could do a waiver from asking for a site plan review.
I don't know. I think we need one to make sure about. I mean, if you ask for parking, that's site plan.
Yeah.
You know, so I think, I think they need to come to the site plan review. And the question is, is how many people gonna be working in your offices? And where, where are the van drivers? Are they out all day?
Yeah.
Are they in and out?
It sounds like they're kind of on call, but they, in other words, you know, since, since all of these people that they go to pick up probably don't have an appointment at the exact same time.
You would then.
That means that the vans will be coming and going at different times. Like if someone's got a 7 o'clock appointment, the van's gonna leave there at 6:00 and pick them up, bring their appointment for an hour and then come back. And then pick up their next job if there's a next job. I would assume that's how it would work. So they'll be in and out all day long. So that could be quite a few, quite a few trips, if you know what I mean, in and out of that location.
Right.
And with that, with that, and with that turn in for stop and shop and, and everything and having it right.
So when you look, and you look at this, at the parking they got here, they have 21 parking spaces.
Yeah.
That's not enough. One person in the office, that takes up the 21st parking space. And then you got 10 people and you gotta, you gotta think of the maps, right?
But there's a parking spot out front too, normally.
No, they, they count.
They count in the.
1, 2, 3, 4, they count those. So.
So the real, so, yeah, yeah, I mean.
And I'm not trying to be hard. I mean, I wanna keep business on Main Street, but if they don't have the parking, where they gonna park? I know they'll park, they'll park next door.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's not enough room there all the time. And it's a private problem.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sure the people that own that parking lot over there would make a deal with them. It'll be expensive.
I'm sure, I'm sure they would. There's space, there's space.
My other, my other concern again, again is coming out of there and making a left-hand turn.
It's not gonna be easy.
Same thing. You can't make, you can't make a right-hand turn always. You almost want to.
I was beginning to have that harsh stroke so they can kind of angle the car and van and get out of there.
I'm noticing that the application is for a special permit, but there's just isn't a special permit used in that. Exactly what special permit.
The ZBA are gonna have to come here? And that's, did the ZBA said they had to come here or?
No, this is, this is the ZBA applications that we get copies of.
Oh, okay. All right, so it's just that? Yeah. Yeah, I don't see enough parking there right now. I don't know how, why those parking spaces are.
Oh, you don't know how much more room there is back there land-wise.
That, that's usable.
Yeah.
I mean, there's room. If you look at, if you look at the overhead, it looks like there's some room there.
Yeah. I think maybe site plan would get us all those answers.
Yes.
The housing zoning says it is special permit available for school buses.
For what school bus?
School buses are use that's available by special permit, but it says school bus. There's no other livery use or bus use that's available. So I don't know how they would get a special permit.
But there's no restriction against livery use?
It's not mentioned? So in our zoning, it's, it's exclusive zoning, so it's not mentioned.
If it's not mentioned, it's excluded?
Yeah.
Unless it's similar enough to some other listed use, I just, I don't, I don't see it, but I, I mean, I don't know.
Is that what puts it into the special permit category?
No, that's not a special permit. Because there are listed special permit uses. If it's not available as a special permit use, we don't have use variances. So it's not.
So they're not supposed to be there at all?
I don't, I don't see it. I'm not the zoning, you know, enforcer, but it's my, would be my interpretation, but it's not my opinion that counts on that.
I, I agree with you, Warren. I think we need to have a site, for a site plan review.
Well, if it's not allowed though, what's the point? I mean, I mean, can they? So yes, the Board of Appeals would have to give them a use variance of some kind.
We don't do, our zoning doesn't allow for use.
Yeah, well, there you go. So how do, how do we?
You have to change.
Maybe, maybe in your comment back to them, you say that if this was a denied use, we would require a site plan review. And if you deem it's a proper use on the zoning, cause it's their job, not ours.
I think we got a question to ask and maybe it's, it's one. If the school bus situation, if the school bus analogy is, is, I think we have to, I would have to ask town council if, if they can come in under the school bus kind of thing.
But does it say the transportation is for?
They're what? They're ambulatory? No, they're just transportation, they're livery.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we got.
Do we have a taxi?
Well, it's pretty transportation out there.
Yeah, but that's school.
How about taxis? Do we have taxis?
I don't see it.
We used to have taxi in town.
Yeah, we used to have a taxi, yeah.
Where were they located out of one? I'm gonna ask you because it's before me.
I think they were over in the center of town.
Over, over the old.
By McHodder's.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right.
That's where they were at.
So that was a local.
That was local, yeah.
Yeah, so that was different.
I mean, we can just make comment that you're not saying in the zoning where it's a special permit use, but end it at that. And then say if it is deemed to be a special permit use, we would ask for a site plan.
Yeah. That's what we do, Danielle. I think that's what we do.
What's that?
Is what she just said.
Reality.
You know, if they deem it as a special permit use, they're gonna come to us for a site plan review.
That's all.
Well.
All right. We can't, we can't opine on that because it's out of our jurisdiction. If they can actually do what they want to do.
Well, um. That's, that's a little bit of a sticky wicket here.
It is.
I mean, if it's not allowed and if it's, if it's not, if it's not allowed, then it's automatically excluded. Well, we, well, I guess the first thing to do is what's the classification?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Check my classification, I'll walk it up there.
Um, you, uh, you can, you can, um, do you wanna, you do wanna? Yeah, sure, that's fine.
Hey, Brad, could you unlock the door because it's locked? Thank you. Bruce is trying to get in. The money man's trying to get in the door. Let it in. Don't shut it, it'll, it'll just lock if you do. Nobody else will get, be able to get in.
So what, you know, that.
I didn't see what you're saying, Warren.
There may be, we, we need to determine what the classification of this use is. And then whether or not we can fit this classification, fit this use in the order of classifications that are allowed.
Right.
And at that point, you could do a site plan review.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, so who determines the classification that this falls under?
Building inspector.
Building inspector just.
And then if they disagree with the decision, they can feel bad for decision.
Well, if the building inspector decides that it falls under the school bus kind of classification, then nobody's gonna be unhappy. They'll just forge ahead with a site plan.
Right. So I, I think that's.
Well, people who don't want taxi and van livery services along Main Street might be unhappy that we're not following the zoning.
But it's for, it's for elderly and for disabled people. I don't know how much objection.
I get it, but is this the only, is this the highest and best use for to?
A real estate office?
Or just even on 28 to have a storage area for vans? I mean, is that, is that where we're at?
Well, again, we're in a situation where that's a business that doesn't need sewer. It has minimal amount of impact.
Yeah, so one less, one less business to pay for the sewer.
I mean, it would have.
I'm just saying, I, I'm not looking for ways to help. If the zoning is, doesn't allow it right now and what we're trying to do on Main Street is to try to make it better. I don't know why we would like bend over backwards to allow a use that's not in the zoning.
Right, we, but see, we can't.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
By the zoning, that's the zoning right now. So Jerry, who else, the officer, he'll decide on it.
Yeah, we're not necessarily trying to bend over. I don't think we're trying to bend over backwards.
He's the officer.
Right, we need to find out.
Yeah.
We need to find out. And, and we can't, we can't say that it's classified this because it's not black and white.
So you, you think that the building inspector would determine the classification?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's let him do that.
So what if I say if the building, if the building inspector deems this a property on the zoning, will CPC will use a site plan review?
Yes.
Yep.
That's, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect.
10 minutes. What else you want to do? Something else?
I could have disagreed with you a little longer.
Yeah, no, no. Stretch it out.
Just a thought.
That's fun. I like that.
What would you like to do?
These bros in college.
I can't help it.
We got 10 minutes left.
I have to be careful what I say.
You have your zone right there. Under mic. Sorry, Bill.
I just wanted to talk about my memo.
Yeah, why don't you? That'd be good.
Um, yeah, so Chris just asked if I would just briefly write a few comments about just summarizing what I've been. During the sewer workshops that I've been attending, I've been to all of them except the one that conflicted with our last meeting. And so far, resident feedback has been pretty, pretty concerned. A lot of, a lot of pretty serious concerns, especially with regard to costs. So I, I know that the workshops and meetings are continuing, continuing to, you know, be held. There are two tomorrow that I'll be attending. And the questions are coming in, you know, on the email, which, you know, staff is working together to get answers to those questions. But overall, I, we, there hasn't been a lot of encouraging feedback. It's been, it's been more just very serious concerns about the cost. So I know they're looking at options as far as how this gets financed, how it gets apportioned, you know, who pays for what. But there's, right now, there's nothing, nothing new to share. But it's, I just wanted to let you know what I have been hearing so far.
Just what I expected. Yes, this is.
Yep. We, we had, when we had the meeting at the new high school there, um, where the majority of people that came back way back then were from the pond area. And their, their concerns were the cost, huge cost of putting sewer into there. And that meeting was primarily negative. So, um. I think it's not, I, I don't think that's on, like you said, Chris, I think that's not, that's expected. It's not unusual. And, and sometimes, you know, trying to rewrite the playbook is not the best way. So there's a lot of other communities that have managed to put this all together and get it to work. Maybe we need to look, talk to one of them. And Joe would be the one to do that, see, you know, what do you, how do you get people to understand the value of this?
Well, if I can, the chairman, I, I've heard from a lot of people too that were at these meetings and I'm hearing the same thing. And they echoed a lot of the questions that I had on, we have the review here is there's a high amount of residential properties along that route. And if they all get to opt out, then really, you know, we're really just dumping this on the rest of the town, which is maybe fair, you know, that, that's who benefits. But I think there's, the two things that I, from talking to people that I see here is missing. And it's one item you kind of covered here is like, call it property values increasing, making the cost too expensive to, to buy property or start a business on Main Street. I think we need to make sure, it could be correct, you know, but I mean, think we need to make sure is look at Reading, look at Andover. Consult there, have Vincenzo or Steve and, you know, consult with some of the real estate people and find out if that's a true statement. I mean, they have sewer, their commercial properties right on Main Street that have sewer. And a like one would be pretty much downtown on either town, you know, if we're talking about downtown, you know, near Winter Street. So I think we need to counter that or at least have information like if that's a really good point, well, you know, the property values along here, right now, we're well below that. I think just to get, to give residents a little opinion on that. And the second one is, there's a, there's talk, but it's very general about how we need to jump on this opportunity. And we need to be a little bit more clear about what it is. So one is, we got an engineering grant and the rest of it is really, there's not really lots of money for the rest of it. But what we're preventing is if we did this in the future is the cost of, call it remediation or repairs all along 125 or at least from Merrimack back to the line there is what I understand. And that's what I don't think they're doing a good job communicating is there's huge cost. We're piggybacking off the street being open by Mass Highway. And what's that cost? And is it, do they, did I miss that in the presentation? But like, that's a huge cost avoidance.
They never, they never set a cost.
And so they're just kind of making the comment like we're getting a piggyback. What, do, do they?
What's the value of the?
It's a huge value.
First of all, it's five years.
We're not having to do any of the engineering for it. We're not having to do any of the restoration. All that stuff is being done by Mass Highway from what I understand. You know, I might be wrong. That's why I think everyone's, a little clarity would help. Probably.
Why, why I asked Danielle to do this is I got a query from the chairperson of the finance committee on how we stand. And I was, we haven't taken an official vote, that I recall, but I think we support sewer from the planning standpoint.
Right.
The financial standpoint, that's why I didn't want them, here, the finance committee here, when we got our, you know, our presentation. Because I didn't want to get bogged down in the finance. I mean, that's not our thing. We, you know.
There's a double-edged sewer here, Chris, that, that's, and, and, you know, and David rest of it. If you put sewer in front of a place, does that make it more valuable? Now, only if the place that wants to buy the piece of land needs sewer.
That's right.
If they don't, you know, then, then, then it really doesn't change the value of the property to them at all. So we have, we've done all these studies about whether or not putting sewer in would increase our value and our tax value and more money coming into the town and everything. And to some extent, I, I believe it would if you kept it in the commercial areas. But I don't think it's a significant, a significant amount. But what it would do, and this is just, this is how, this is really the sales pitch, aside from what you said, which is absolutely true. They gotta realize the value that they're getting, you know, just to get the pipe here. Where we go from there, at some point, they're gonna need it. Where we go from there is another story. But, but they have to understand that there's a, the people that would come in to, for this town to grow are gonna expect to have sewer.
Oh, yeah?
And to not have it, and to not have it at this point, maybe we get, we get.
You know, those people that, those people that have older systems on Main Street, they're gonna fail at some point. They're not gonna comply when they're gonna sell their property.
That was one of the comments to Danielle was that, you know, kiddies and the shoe, they're, you know, they have, somebody said we would be able to get more restaurants. And the comment was from some people, there's already restaurants on, on Main Street, but there's a great cost to kiddies and the shoe.
400 grand to the ground.
Yeah. And then what is the upkeep of that? And, you know, we have civil engineers here in the audience, but I mean, this, that's just not such an easy way to hand. I'm gonna put in a system that can handle a whole restaurant.
Pat Lee is on the EDC. He was sitting here last week and I asked him the question. He said, put it in. He can pay for it. He's gonna pay, he's, he's gonna say yes.
Because it was almost half a million dollars, so he's.
Yeah, you know, because you, you're.
And that was when he poured it in.
It's huge.
And that's a long time.
They don't want to do that on every property that wants to be.
No, no.
It's, it's crazy.
Well, not only that, but there's an environmental impact that you avoid.
Yeah.
So, so I mean, by, by getting these, some of these systems, I mean, I, I don't know. I've been told that there's a lot of the systems out there made a lot of trouble in there and they, some of them you've seen, well, they were doing the one that stopped and shopped every three years. They couldn't seem to keep us.
Chinese cuisine gets it done, what, I mean, four years?
And then, and then, and then the system out of Walmart out there, they've, that's been definitely problematic.
Danielle, did the, did the group that presented, did they survey the, at least the businesses along the route? They did.
They did. And that, that work was what FXM did. They compared the increases in property values to, or not the increases, the, the differences in property values between sewer properties in the surrounding areas versus.
So they did that?
They did that, yeah.
So maybe it's, I don't know, maybe. And then when I mentioned survey, so they've actually talked to the business and said, and so they gave a thumbs up or down? I don't need it, I, I want it?
Yeah, that was incorporated into FXM's work, but there was a business survey that's been out and.
And that was in the presentation?
It was.
I gotta look that up.
Remember that they presented that, but I know that that was the informed FXM's work that they gave to Kleinfelder, which.
For, for the record, Dave, I also think that we are gonna be responsible for some part of the engineering as far as our pipe is concerned.
Right.
I think that's all.
Then it's not gonna be all insured by the state, but.
Didn't mean to miss, we could say it was covered.
Yeah.
I just mean, I think that was one of the grants was for engineering, right?
They just need to understand, you know, we, we, we need to try to make everybody understand the value of that if we're gonna get a vote on it, so.
It's a, it's a big value.
Even if we.
That, even that, it's only a couple hundred thousand of the quarter month, quarter of a month that state picks up.
It's what?
These all they pick up. Right there, it's very short distance that from picking up.
Merrimack.
Yeah.
Back.
It's 125 to. You know, with 125 again, with 114 come together. And that's, that's what they do, 114 down to, to the, before the bridge, I think. So we still have to cross the bridge and then go on. But that little stretch is a lot of money because it's really a difficult area. There's lots of stuff going on, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And there's.
Well, it's gonna be, it's always, I, you know, the reason I brought up that other meeting is because just, just to emphasize it, it's always been a tough sell.
Oh, yeah?
And because, because it's, and many times it's, um, a lack of understanding what it would, what would happen and what the value of it is. and what the value of it is. There's a very real value to it if your town is going to grow and you're going to be environmentally conscious, you know, conscious, and, and, you know, especially areas like the pond areas, you know, just... That's a, that's where, the rest of this town is probably never going to be suited because the rest of the towns, the maj, not all of them, the majority of the rest of the town is, is, um, suitable for septic systems.
Right. All right, so...
Thanks, Danielle.
And that was my update, my planning administrator updating the direction of this, so I should have said.
That's it?
Hey, that's it. Um, it's...
Eight five, is Ryan online?
Yes, yes, he is. He's here.
Hi, Ryan. There we go. I just had to hear your voice. I trust Danielle, but we got to make sure.
I don't know why the participants aren't appearing on the screen. They're appearing here, but I don't know if they're not.
I gotta get some other screens.
Oh, yeah. Is that this one?
Yeah, you're going to need to, I think. There you go. I found the, I found the participants. They're over there. I'm going to do this, so we can see this one. Mike did it two weeks ago, so if he can do it, I can do it.
Okay, I'm just going to leave this up so I can track anyone trying to get in.
Yes. So, 146, 150.
Good evening.
Brad Latham. Have a seat next to the microphone.
The record, my name is Brad Latham. I'm here with Bruce Wheeler, who is trustee of the McLean Realty Trust, Peter Ogren and Joe Grillo of Hayes Engineering, and Tom Minor of Park Landscape. We will not take a lot of your time tonight. We wanted to come and just give you an update of where we are since the, uh, since the last meeting, uh, and we have a few comments in that regard. One item that we could have, not sure whether the board needs to approve with the peer review, but, uh, we, okay, we're satisfied with it, so hopefully the peer reviewer can start their process. We'll fund that based upon the terms of the contract. So I'm going to ask you this time if Peter would start off and just give an overview of what's happened since the last time in the engineering area.
Yeah, we, we, the last time we met, we said we had a few things to work out with the fire chief as far as the site plan. For that reason, we thought it important to come before you again. We had had an opportunity to meet with Deputy Chief Galvin and determine what, uh, what he would like to see for access. And Joe, if you could put up that, uh, fire department access. This shows the fire department access plan. If you recall, initially, we had a much smaller circle. And his concern was basically that they could get their largest vehicle around a circle without doing a three-point turn. Last time I had presented it as a three-point turn requirement, and he didn't disapprove that, but he didn't, it wasn't his favorite. And so we said, well, let's go back and take a look at it. He sent us the actual specifications on his pumper truck, which turned out to be the, the more critical of the two trucks. And we came up with this as a design, and you can see where we've got the, uh, the pumper truck coming in here and going around. Okay, Joe can do it. Going around the circle. And one of the reasons you can do it in a circle at size is because we're having the truck enter tangentially on the outside perimeter of the circle. I see Warren, you're shaking your head, yes, that's the way it works. You've probably got plenty of trucks, so... So to, to, to go over the changes that were made as a result of this, Joe, if you go to the next slide. There were a couple of other things, whoops, there were a couple of other things that were mentioned. This shows you the difference in geometry. It meant shaking the geometry all around a little bit, because you can see where the smaller circle was and how it entered on kind of the wrong side of the circle, not tangentially, and that kind of led to the three-point turn. Uh, it meant changing the location of the handicap spaces, although I personally think they relate better to both buildings now. Uh, and then there were a couple of other things that, uh, came up that we thought you should see that we've added to the plan. Um, there was talk about a crosswalk the last time, and Joe, if you could go up. Uh, Bruce is committed to doing a pedestrian activated crosswalk, signal activated crosswalk, so there'd be a button activated where you press a button and a flash would flash. Or maybe the red and yellow light, I don't know, whatever the police department would like to see. Uh, and that would be on, on each lane so that people could cross safely. And that, that would serve as both our, our residents who would like to go, I think, either to the Dunkin' Donuts or the, uh, or the park, whichever, whichever way they want to go, either east or west on Park Street. Um, and then also the people that mentioned that they try to cross on a crosswalk that does occur some distance down and is kind of dangerous. This would have good site distance and, and an activated signal. We also changed the location of the hydrant. The proposed hydrant was out on the street, and, uh, the, the fire chief indicated that he would not use that hydrant. He wanted the hydrant that's located in the location that we show here, where when he brings his pumper in, he can hook the pumper up to it and hook up to the building as well, which the water service to the building comes in just above at the top of your, your screen there. I think that, Joe, did I cover everything that we...
Um, there's some talk about keeping people out of this fire, emergency fire access. So we're proposing a breakable plastic fence that the truck can just go through and break if there's a fire.
Like Batman?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, it, it would be a plastic chain, and actually, I was mentioning last time, was there any, uh, any curb there? And there's no curb at all along that whole section, because that was in front of the automotive use. It's just, uh, it's a, in fact, there's no differentiation for the sidewalk. It's paved right from the edge of pavement through, so, and, and he was okay with that. He actually said he would accept a lock box, a Knox box with a key, but, uh, I think from a fire department standpoint, this is better. And, uh, as far as he mentioned plowing, as far as taking it down, it's easy enough, we'll, we'll be able to undo the chain. I can't, I mean, the only thing that I think anybody was concerned about was, uh, somebody inadvertently going in there. They won't go if the chain is there. Uh, and if somebody wants to unlock the chain and go in there, that would be a real trespass, I think, so...
Warren, you had a question?
Yeah, I also noticed in the fire department that they talked about, um, address, about they wanted to keep the 150 address. And do you, uh, so what are you going to, you guys going to use like 148 as your address?
Yeah, I, we'll, we'll figure out the 146, 148, maybe, maybe the one building is 146, the other building is 148. I think we only need two addresses, so that, that's completely fine.
We could also maybe do an A and B if you had to.
When I read through it, I was like, that's, that's interesting that they, they said he pirated our address.
Yeah, you can't take their address home. No, you don't want to do that.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I just wondered how you worked that out.
I'll, I'll look into it with the town hall and see what the process is to, so it doesn't slip through the cracks.
Yep, good. Thank you.
The other thing that I think would be helpful is that we did review the consultant's, uh, proposal to the town, and we've worked with Gia Grandi before, and I know he's lived in town, I assume he still does. Uh, but I think it would be helpful in this instance if we could set up something with Danielle and, uh, Leah Bazbain, so that we could sort of go over the plans and what we're trying to accomplish, so that we don't get, uh, a bunch of reviews that's stuff that we've already considered or, or how we're going to handle. I mean, I'll just give you an example. I hate to see him spend time saying we've got five parking spaces that are in the setback and it's a violation of zoning, when we've already told everybody that's part of the plan. It was something that occurred when, when the geometries changed around and we didn't realize it when, when the zoning was drafted. So, uh, uh, we know that, you know, he knows where we're at on, on the same page. Danielle's shaking her head, I think we can probably accomplish that. But we never sit down and discuss the project without the permission of the, the board or...
Right, right.
We'll also make sure that he updated plans with the staff so that they can share that the design view is not like you feel they're...
Right.
And I think Tom, you have a couple of moments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We just had a, just wanted to go over the few changes we made. Uh, Bruce met with the, uh, one of the butters, and we've had discussions about adding a privacy screen at his request there for his, for his backyard. So we've added, uh, ten green giant junipers along that property line, fast-growing evergreens. Somewhat deeresist, de-resistant, so they'll, depending on how bad, depending on how bad the winter is.
They actually, they've done pretty well.
Not on the way to show.
It's always nice to say, but when they're hungry, they're hungry, yep. Um, and we've, uh, made some changes to the shrub planting beds based on Peter's new configuration for the parking and drop-off. And if you see this red line here, that is the, uh, the site distance line that he provided us. So we've pulled all our trees back and, uh, the shrubs that are in that are, are really low-growing perennials or some, uh, low-growing evergreen shrub that could be pruned to a, a two-foot height. And that, that is, uh, basically the only revisions we've made to this, this plan.
You get your tree back in the circle. You get your tree back in the circle now.
Yes, I got my tree back in the circle.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I have any questions?
Oh, so Tom Minor, Park Design, Landscape Architects.
That's pretty much all we had to share tonight. We wanted, if possible, if you, when you threw us any question we had tonight, would you continue for about a month to give the, uh, the peer reviewer his work and...
Sure.
Yeah.
Would you put us in December?
So we're, uh...
Versatile, ever, so...
November first now, December sixth, would that be...
Right, right.
I also would like to leave you two paper copies tonight. I know, uh, I sent you an email before, and you said you could take that. You didn't need thirteen.
We don't need thirteen. Please.
I guess that, I certainly like...
These things have done, done away with that, that's all.
Give it to us on a flashy, I give them.
Yeah, that, that works. Okay, thank you.
They're cheaper than the paper?
Yeah.
Glass drives.
Yeah.
Cheaper than paper.
Well, we sent an email along with it, which she had said that that would be sufficient. Don't make thirteen copies.
Yeah, we don't need, I don't think thirteen is needed anymore.
But I think we should provide at least one paper copy for, for record.
And also to show people.
Yeah, people come in, we can, they can unroll it and show it right away.
Right, right.
Instead of having to pull it up on a computer, which we have one right there, too. You still want a Miler, right?
I mean, I really think...
Do you want...
Uh, sure, I mean, it's, I mean, at the end of the...
Yeah, yeah, we'll worry about that.
We'll worry about it. Provide it on Miler if you want. I mean, that might be a good record drawing for you.
Yeah, but you'll need a Miler to file though, won't you?
What's that?
Won't you need a Miler to file?
Well, this doesn't get filed with the registry. It's not really in the plan, so it's a sight line.
Yeah, yeah, we do that, just there.
So Peter, you mentioned too the crosswalk and, and I, and I love that idea, too. And I think with the sight line improved, it'll be, it's a, it's a great placement. I think it's always a more natural spot to be in versus the one that's about fifty feet down or east. And so I did have, I did have an exchange with Sergeant Howe, and, you know, he, he's open to the idea, and we have to kind of explore, but I think we should look at, really maybe not part of this project, but the one that is existing right now about fifty feet down, I think that's a problem. It still remains a problem. We're not, you're not necessarily going to be adding control to that or lights to that. So, and it's only fifty feet down from a new one that we're going to put in place. So I'm not sure, Danielle, you know, State, 62 State Road, I don't know how it works. Can you take, can you take crosswalk away? Uh, there's certainly not a lot of work to do.
I think the state, the state probably put that in when they reconstruct 62.
That's what I mean. So I'm not sure the process and Sergeant Howe said he kind of, he was off this week, but he's going to be back.
Well, is that a state highway or is that a state number?
County road.
I think it's a state number.
Con, Kyra.
It's a county road.
County, it's on state, it's just a numbered route.
It's a numbered route, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But they restate, the state rebuilt it.
Yeah, they do, but they do that with the, the cherry sheet funds.
Yeah.
You know, to come back to the city or town. So I think it's under local control. And I assume that you'd be willing to remove that side walk.
I wouldn't. Yeah, it doesn't do anything, because I think it's there, well...
It doesn't really go there.
If you come out, if you come out of the, the meeting spaces, the library house, you come out into that parking lot, and then you will go across there.
But it's...
So, but for the rest of the library, you're coming out the front door.
Yeah, you want to come off the front and then we're joining into this development. But I think it was always put there because of the excessive speeds and the lack of a sight line. If you put it at the top of the hill when there was no sight line, you were, you were getting like forty feet closer to getting hit.
Right.
So now, you know, but yeah, you... Mr. Bonifaz, who was on last week, and another gentleman, Adam, I think at 148, they both said they're in fear for the life getting on that crosswalk. So I think the best thing is to get rid of it. It's Stanford Creed or whatever, so get rid of it, use the new one. That's six or two, and it's, everyone, I hope, would be happy, and I'm not sure if anyone in your office, Peter, Joe, you've talked to them at all, those, those two people that were on the call, like...
I let Adam know.
Okay, cool, Mark.
I communicated with him about the R variety, and I...
Great. Okay, on that 10 R variety.
I let him know that we were going to have a...
Great.
A, a, a manual, he said, uh, manual signal at the, at the new crosswalk. So he, he's aware of it.
Great. Thanks, Bruce. Yeah, and I, I didn't reach out to them, you know, but I did, when I did reach out to Sergeant Howe, I mentioned the two gentlemen. I had their names, but I didn't have Adam's last name. I knew his address, though. He said they're, they were, yeah, pretty critical of how the, the safety of it. So I think that'd be the best thing. But, um, yeah, I think that'd be great for us to cut it off.
Get rid of that one. It's a good idea.
Yeah.
With, with the, with one that has its manual signals, that's okay. I mean, I go by the one at Merrimack College all the time.
All the time, yeah.
And the kids are, they actually use the button. There's some always cut behind.
Yeah.
But usually they're cutting across when there's red lights.
Yeah.
And the traffic's already stopped. Um, so they are, they are thinking about it. But most kids go to that crosswalk and use that, use the button and wait. And, you know, it's like, it's like any, any crosslight, you got to wait for the signal.
Along the lines of the poles with the yellow flashing lights on.
Yeah, they have one, uh, Andover.
Just lower ones, I think, right?
You know, Andover.
Yeah, and that's fine, because it's not, it's not a highway speed.
It's right. It's only when someone's crossing and it goes quick, so...
Right. Gets people across this two lanes instead of four lanes, or four and a half lanes.
Yeah.
Which was on 114, so...
Yeah, sure.
That's a, that's a major road. This is not. So I, I, I think people will use that, but people that are concerned about the traffic will use it, and then some won't. It's just, anyway. So people, people jaywalk all the time, so it doesn't really matter. If they're going to jaywalk, they're going to jaywalk.
I think they'll use it. I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, it is, it is.
That's all I got, though. I'll, thank you for doing all the moves that we asked about.
Anything, anything else from, in us we talked, asked, Ryan? Ryan, do you have any questions? Mr. Carroll? There we go.
No, I'll probably, uh, I think, man, you did a good job, bro, and all of it, from last time, so it was good, thank you.
Good. And then we have one other. Mr. Reeves, do you have any comments?
Actually, just fine with everything.
Okay, great.
I like, I like the, uh, the change in the site as well. I think it, uh, makes a major improvement.
Okay.
Good, thank you. All right, so, I'm good. Danielle? Debbie, you got everybody's name, Debbie? Okay. All right, gentlemen, so we're going to...
December sixth.
December sixth at eight, eight P M. Okay? Okay, have a Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Thanksgiving to you guys.
Everybody, too.
Well, don't rush it, geez.
Well, we won't see him until after then.
Yeah, I know.
It's understandable.
Yeah, I know.
At least he didn't say Christmas.
Yeah, yeah.
Good night, now.
Take care, guys. Take care, Peter.
Thank you.
All right, what else we have? We have that?
We have the one, one last one.
We got 197?
Yep. Oh, yeah, and MBTA.
And the MBTA?
Yep.
All right, Danielle, what's 197?
197.
So, just, um, to explain the background of this a little bit, um, oh, do it up, thank you.
Parking thing.
The, um, over the summer, 197 Main Street had requested, um, a minor modification to their previously approved site plan in order to allow outdoor storage, which is only allowed, um, by the CPC, the, the site plan review process. So the outdoor storage areas were shown, and the CPC, um, approved that, um, as a minor modification, um, with the understanding that, um, they also needed to obtain a special permit for, for the landscaping use that was associated with it from the zoning board of appeals. The applicant then went to the zoning board of appeals, applied for the special permit for that landscaping use, and, um, the ZBA did grant the special permit, but under the condition that they move the outdoor storage area to a different location, um, and as a result of that new location, I have asked them to come back in for site plan review to, to modify their site plan.
You know, and I can say, what, the, the little red square that's drawn on this plan near, uh, Plymouth Street, that was, uh, what, what's supposed to go there?
What's, are supposed to go there?
Yeah, what, what is this? What are the CBAs? They got to use that for the parking area for their...
I mean, the parking spaces are the, straight...
No, 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 I mean...
I have a, I have a question.
Do, do you remember back when...
Yeah, yeah, but, but I, my question is, did the ZBA say why they moved this? Why did they, I mean, they had to have a reason. They didn't just arbitrarily consider it's wired someplace else.
Well, I did ask about that, and I got the decision, which should be in the share pile.
It is?
It is. Um, but the decision doesn't say why.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't say. It said something about, um...
I didn't see anything. I, I was wondering...
Resident say or something like that. Said something about that.
They just wanted to move it, but they didn't say why they moved it.
Right, and they, so they put it in and they took about eight parking spaces away.
Well, they, yeah, that's, that's my point, what, what was the, there had to be a, a fairly substantial reason to give up eight parking spaces.
Right, and I don't know if they could, because we put those three behind the building.
Yeah.
So that they would qualify for parking.
Right.
And, and there's a, a block, I think they're blocked.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, that parking area in the back of the building is addressed in the Z B A decision. They want, the applicant's truck and trailer shall be parked in the main parking area at the rear of the premises as shown on the plan submit.
So we're gonna put storage over near that Plymouth sideline?
So I, I actually asked the applicant about this and he said that there's always been, what does his correspondent say? Um, let's see. He answered my question about that. Just wanna get those. Still loading.
I told you, it took a long time to load that stuff, didn't it?
Yeah.
Once you loaded up the others, then it came right in.
Well, Danielle's doing that too, I encourage you, um, you, you both to just go by there too, cause that area where they show, um, you know, the, the upper rectangular area is in a recessed, um, you know, it is a parking area, that's one, but it is in a recessed area that has stone walls and, and a high wall, like at least eight or, like Plymouth Street is a good eight feet above it.
I understand.
So that's one thing I'll just notice is, I get a little bit that it's, it's a nook and, uh, but I, my thing like is about parking spaces for the existing building, is there sufficient parking?
Yes.
I guess my question, and then I do notice and it's, it's not really represented on this plan or maybe other ones I see, but the entire right side of the, of the building is a, a gravel area that has storage of trailers, at least I s- I counted six trailers out there that are up on that gravel area right now. Um, I saw masonry products and stuff up there and some pallets already in the area that the Z B A designated not to put them, they're in there right now.
Oh, in the back?
Yeah, pretty much, but, um, but anyways, you know, it's, it's not like, it's not like it's this giant volume, it's a few pallets, but I'm just trying to understand, like, how is this? When you, with the other tenants they have in this building, I'm just trying to understand the compatibility of the landscaping business, you know.
So in nineteen ninety-nine, that's when this plan was drawn by Anderson.
Yeah.
That's when they came in here, the site plan review for this building in the present use.
Right.
And we made them add those four parking spaces, Danielle, you weren't here that room. I believe we made them add those four parking spaces, cause they did not have enough parking. We're taking out eight or ten parking spaces, they're definitely not gonna have enough parking, because the Z B A basically had a win, said, we'll give them the special permit, but you can't use the area that you've got your site time review.
It just seems like they could get, you know, I wish I could kind of draw it out for people, but it just seems like they could get, they could get it on the highway business side. So if you, if you look at their rectangle where it says employee parking and there's an, it's kind of an angle, it's probably more about, no, it's actually the, uh, it's the floodplain line, the hun- the hundred foot buffer.
Yep.
The hundred foot buffer kind of goes back and then it, you have this residential line, um, there and, and I know they were trying to stay away from the thirty foot or they, Z B A wouldn't allow the thirty foot, cause I guess per the zoning, Danielle, you're allowed to go thirty foot into the.
Yep.
The zone that has the lesser hardship or whatever they call.
The more, the less restrictive.
Restrictions, thank you, thank you.
More restrictive, more restrictive, it would be a residence zone.
Right, right.
And that's what we did.
So we're allowed, you know, you're allowed to move into that, so that's what I saw in, in one of the plans and now it's kind of back out of that area, but it makes sense like to, to get, to leave the parking the way it is and then do some sort of subtractive area that's up in that gravel area, like add an area, if it's, you own the property, like why not just put it up there?
You're talking gravel area that leads up to Plymouth Street?
It doesn't, it, there, it is kind of wooded up near the top of the plan there, um.
Oh, it's a hill, it's up that hill?
Yeah, it's, it's a hill, like again, that parking spot.
Oh, yeah, goes from one oh two to one eighty.
The dog leg that goes up to Plymouth is dug in a good, it's, it's in eight, ten feet into the.
Red brown stone wall, it's a one to one slope.
Yeah, and then it, again, grades away, you can even see the grading lines back up, um, and it's more of a wooded area there, so the gravel begins more around the building. It's, it's, it's changed since this, uh, drawing though, it's definitely more north now. If, uh, where's north, yeah, it's north, there's more north, uh, more area that's been carved out north. That's why I'm thinking, that's why you would, you put it there.
You know, there looks like there's a lot of parking, but when you take, when you go to the pizza place, they have a restaurant.
Yeah.
So there's, parking for that restaurant is incorporated in all this parking.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Even, even all around the bill, cause that's.
Well, no, you know.
Right.
They used, they utilized some of that parking, as I recall, for the site plan that we did for that. And we had it, you know, when you, when you get back up there, you don't have a lot of parking left though.
That's what I mean, I mean, the parking, parking with the restaurant seems like it's adequate, you know.
Right.
Um, but when you get back up to the building, it's just, it's just the parking like adjacent and there's a lot of loading going on, so it's not like every sp- every square foot or linear foot along the building is, is a, is a parking spot, they, they have doors, they have other things and, so they're really limited in a lot of ways. That's why taking away what they carved out up in that little dog leg area, to me, seems like you'd wanna preserve that.
Right.
And I just think that, um, and maybe there's a way to help them out, but there's a, I think you can, and they've already carved away some, but this, we're showing that heavy topo there, I think that could be actually pulled back a little bit and you could, you could preserve the employee parking spots and then put in this little thirty foot area for storage.
The, 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 the storage area impact, did not impact any of the, of the parking.
Yeah.
That I recall. Am I correct Danielle?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to stop a business from being a business.
No, I'm not, it's not them, it's, it's, it's the Z B A is the issue here.
Yeah.
They didn't, they didn't even tell us why they wanted to move it, other than they wanted to move it, and if I'm not mistaken, the building inspector was in favor of what we did.
Well, let's just, you know, let's find out, right, let's just find out.
Why they did it?
Yeah, right.
That was my only question.
I don't know if it's in their minutes or whatever.
I actually did ask for the minutes, but, but they weren't ready yet, um. Okay.
Use me as you ha- if you need, you know, use my name.
No, I, I'm, I'm happy to ask, it's not bad, I actually did ask the building inspector what the reason was and I, I, I couldn't. I think his impression was it was in attempt to respond to neighbors' concerns, but I.
What they did was they, they actually encroached on the neighbors that were complaining about anything happening at this building.
Um.
Oh wait, so on Plymouth?
Yeah, from nineteen ninety-nine, that, that's, you know, we have the, that's what I was trying to share, it's kind of some history there.
Right.
People were complaining about the noise and the lights.
Right, right, they complained about the, about the, it was very, they had the dumpsters there and everything, they complained about all, all.
Remember they had, yeah, they had a whole bunch of dumpsters in there for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I went and looked at every one of them.
I assume it's number five and number seven Plymouth, that the ones that are direct to butters and then Respring Lane is the one that's off to the right here.
Yeah.
The property, um, to the right. But their house is really far away.
Right, we were trying to, we were trying to, I mean, where we put that stuff was away from them. You know, and it's not a noisy thing, you gotta start a vehicle up and leave, you know?
In terms of the request that they've made, um, which is to modify the plan to show the outdoor storage in these new areas, wh- what should the response be? I guess the request, what the applicant would like is for the CPC to find that this is a minor modification and then to approve it. I think there are still concerns about those locations, so should we give, do you wanna give feedback that you, you can't approve that modification without fully understanding the Z B A's reasons for making a change?
And then they're gonna have to give us, they're gonna have to tell us they're gonna act park, you know, they're gonna lose that many parking spaces. And how many parking spaces are they losing?
Well, you know.
We know right away that you're losing.
What's the calcul- what's the parking space?
Is it four hundred? Is it one per four hundred square feet, is that considered?
Well, with the rest of that the restaurant out front.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's true, it's kind of.
So I mean, by, so by the time you do, that's, but you, you know, somebody needs to do a comprehensive calculation about how many parking spaces we need. And if they're not enough, I mean, then they could need to go back to what we designed or what we agreed on, because that gives them enough parking spots.
Right.
So the answer, the answer to the Z B A is, we don't, you know, by doing this, we, we don't think that you end up with enough parking spaces for the site.
It's like they took four.
So a change would have to be made to, to accommodate, to, to provide enough parking spaces. And, and if that's, and if they say, yeah, okay, fine, that means you need a new site plan, you know? That provides, that, that puts the stuff where they want it and provides enough parking, I don't know where they're gonna find the parking.
That's a problem, cause we couldn't find it back then, that's why we made it do this.
Yeah, well, that's why we put it where we put it, is because that way we can maintain the parking.
That's why they dug out that hill bit.
Yeah.
Was to put parking there.
There, there's something else in the Z B A's conditions of their decision that's a little puzzling to me, which is no deliveries of landscaping ma- materials may be made to the premises.
May be made what?
May, may be made to the premises.
It's kind of hard, I mean, a landscape truck bringing their own stuff there, that's not a, well, they weren't, when they came to us for the site plan, I don't think they were having materials delivered there, they were gonna bring materials from a job that was extra there, like payables.
I mean, that seems.
But what they just said means that the landscape company can't bring their own payers there, cause it's a delivery of a paper.
But they can bring excess back from a job, it's kind of how it reads, like.
Yeah, we only needed twelve, we bought seven hundred, so we brought.
Just seems very, it just seems very.
They bought three pallets.
As far as the landscape business, I'm like, you could have other places.
They bought three pallets, they had a half pallet left over, I understand what they're doing, they can't bring the pa- the half pallet back. So they're bringing it, they're gonna use it on another job, but it does mean that they're moving landscape materials. So how do they store this stuff? It's also gonna cost them more money to put a fence in this area, because they're gonna have to go through asphalt. And, and they gave, I don't know how they're gonna do it.
Not understanding what it was they were trying to accomplish, I mean, assuming they were just trying to appease a neighbor or something, it's a possibility, as far as placement goes, but, um, um. They, they, they need to take into account the, the parking situation, so.
They should, and at, at one point, they should have just done, hey, we can't give you a special permit.
Well, I think I want to also ask about, and I'll give that feedback to the applicant, but I also wanted to ask, um, when, do, do you want to consider this to be a minor modification? Or do you want this to be a situation where they actually apply for a new year's?
I think we, we're looking at it.
If we just want you to tell about parking, we, we look at it.
I don't, first, first of all, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves here, first of all, first of all, we need to talk to the Z B A, find out why they made the change. Can we change it back, because if we don't change it back, we, we, then, then we have a problem. So if they say, no, you can't change it back, that's our decision, fine, then we have to tell the applicant, he's gotta stop with another site plan, cause he doesn't have enough parking.
Okay.
That's the answer.
Because I, I mean, he has applied to us for the minor modification, so I can give him the feedback and say they're not ready to issue a decision because of the following piece of information we need.
Having said all that though, I, 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 I think it could be considered a minor modification. But it would have to be a new plan and it would have to show the right amount of parking. Cause we don't need to be, we don't need to be a, a, you know, we don't need to be.
No, no, even if they have to recalculate, calculate parking force.
This is not crazy.
Yeah, we don't need to be heavy handed on this, but we do need to have.
Just wanna make sure this is parked.
What, what the big thing is here, it's, it's in the red on the, on the drawings. We, we went outside the business district, so zoning district, I think that's what the zoning board came up on, cause they probably don't understand the rule.
Well, perhaps not, so perhaps a quick, quick education is all we need of that.
I did send them home.
Thank you.
We didn't think that.
After, after this came back?
Jennifer is not.
So they, so they even, probably didn't even read it.
So who knows?
Yeah.
We'll see.
I've, I've sat in their meetings before and they didn't know me and they don't read the C B C comments on, on, on.
Well, let's, let's, let's just leave it at that, let's, let's say, listen, you know, okay?
I ignore myself too.
That's the best way.
I don't take myself seriously.
That's a good, that's a good answer, why?
Yeah, we'll leave it at that, and then, and that way we, we will know what to do as we find out what they're willing to do.
Mister Ron, Mister Carroll, do you have any comments on that?
No, I'm very willing to go.
I, I, I can't, I gotta remember to, I looked up and I saw your name, that's why I'm asking you, I'm not, trying not to forget you.
Yeah, and I recommend just, you, Ryan, Ryan, just anybody, just, you know, cause we're driving by, like, just pull in there, that, it tells you everything, it tells you, instead of looking at plans, you'll see exactly the issues and you'll see the grades.
We did too.
Yeah.
I, I walked through the dumpsters that were out there.
I'm sure previously you guys did it, so.
We forced them to come in.
Yeah, so anyways, what's next?
Ryan had a comment that.
Ryan, I'm sorry, would you say sir?
Yeah, I, I did take a drive back, you know, some, you know, some of that vehicle crew.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, last thing.
That's you, right?
MBTA?
That's, uh.
Okay.
No, that's the phone.
So, uh.
MBTA?
We're back to you, the MBTA young lady.
I just have it on as a run, running agenda item, I don't really have an update since last time, I'm just continuing to work on the, um, application that we discussed.
Perfect, so it'll be ready when we have to make deadline?
Yes, which will be the end of January, so.
We have to run that by, um, SLIP board?
I'm going to send the whole thing to the town administrators so we can share with the SLIP board, not sure when they'll be ready to look at it, but I just want them to have it.
Perfect, well, we just have to make the date, I know they were very adamant on making that date, even if they don't get a chance to look and comment. Anything else?
Just a.
This one?
Just a, um. I, I'm just going back to the, to the sewer project, I'm just trying to think about, you know, if we should, if we should maybe brainstorm a little with Joe again about, about approach, about the approach, maybe do another, a little.
I think at, at this point, it's almost gonna be the special tile media.
Well, yeah.
And then it's gonna have to be after.
But we need to.
I would get some messaging, messaging out before then, because.
Yeah, if we, I mean, we need to talk about how, what, what's going, and there may be some things, some, some points that are missing here, so. Like the one they brought up, I mean, maybe we're not leaning on that enough.
And what Danielle, in the memo, the comments, I mean, that's, they're, they're there at the workshop, so they're gathering those comments and they, they should just be really working, working those comments, right? Yeah, and I'd get something out of the transcript or online.
Maybe they need a hand, you know?
Yeah, they just need some bulleted, but some reality too, you know?
Yeah.
I, I mean, the expense is a real.
Yeah.
Concern to this one too.
It's real, but since Joe, for instance.
It's always been a concern.
But for instance, since Joe's gone through a few of these sewer projects, even that context, he'd be a great person to speak at the town meeting, but even in advance of that, there's, there is cost to these type of projects, so he, he could help put in context by referencing, you know, you get the right guy for the job first off. He's been, he's been here and this is what we did in Gloucester, this is what we, this, this is what it looked like, and this is what, this is kind of what it, this is following the same curve. You know, it's that whole like realization of this costs a lot, but then he was there to see the backside of it, of the benefit and, you know, and, and he's a perfect person to talk about.
He is, I talked to him for a while, very knowledgeable too.
When you talk cost, material cost, the materials to go from here all the way out there, it's a lot of materials. And, and they gotta, they have to have a handle on that, they gotta know what that, what that material cost is gonna be. They may be able to lower it because of, of gross bonding, but who knows?
And yeah, and the other thing is maybe, you know.
You know, it's not just labor, no, it's not.
We did this two years ago, maybe, all, three years ago.
Maybe the other thing is we need to maybe put, define some limits on it, you know, on where we're going with it. I mean, I know that he already did do that, but if you could define, put some limits on it so that we, so that we don't get too, so much pushback from residential people. Because we basically want it for commercial use, that's, that's, that's our biggest thing, so.
Yeah, with, with that lower cost, I mean, cause how, again, how are they, how are they doing the tee offs of this, are they putting in a tee at everybody as they go? Or you're tapping in or?
And I've, I've actually installed.
Yeah.
Made sewer name lines.
So how you, how you hit this main?
Yeah, you have to put a, yeah, you have to, you have to put a, a, um, a tap off to every single piece of property.
So that's what I'm saying, I wonder, not that you're advocating this, but I'm saying, I wonder if you just do these taps to, at the commercial properties, you know, do you just forego the residential? Yeah, it's a more expensive tie-in.
No, you can't.
I don't think you're allowed to.
If you, if you wanna penetrate.
Well, let me, let me rephrase, let me rephrase that, okay? Well, let me rephrase, let me rephrase that, okay? You you um, as a public project, I believe as a public project, you have to provide um a tie for every single property. As a private project, you wouldn't have to, 'cause um, 'cause I've done both. And and in the private one, somebody said, no, don't want it? Well, go right by. When you want it, it's gonna cost you, 'cause you're gonna have to go and tap that line. And I've done a bit of that too, so it's not, not, it's not, it's expensive. It's expensive.
I was trying to think, oh, yeah, reduce.
But you know, you you think all these people that they don't want to tie in.
I know.
Eh, you know, they don't want to, they they don't want to pay for, you know, all this other stuff. Well, when you, when you need to replace the septic system and it's how much now, Warren, for a septic system?
Yeah, they're getting pretty expensive.
Forty, fifty grand?
Yeah, the forties now, yeah.
You know, tying into this and paying their stuff is not gonna be forty grand.
That for commercial?
No, regularly.
Well, and I think that's a little.
Depending on where you are.
Especially for redoing.
Talking small lots of nation.
Some of the, some of the, some of the, uh, some of the costs for uh, I mean, it's not as bad as a pound of butter these days, but um some of the costs, some of the costs are um are ridiculous. Some of the pipe that we used to pay nine bucks for, you know, they want seventy-two bucks for, same piece of pipe. And it was all over the map for a while, sixty, seventy, you know, we had to shop around, you could find one that was like ten dollars cheaper, but but um still, you know, for a ten-dollar piece of plastic pipe, you know, ten-foot piece of pipe.
Pipe is not cheap anymore.
Yeah, it was, you know, and then everything associated with it just get right out of hand, every every single item and then all of the suppliers of all the different materials, from the sand and the stones and everything, just went through the roof. And then, of course, everything's gotta be hauled and so everything's in a truck and so
Diesel.
Fuel, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just, it's a snowball.
Yep.
And it snowballed very quickly from, from low twenties to the forties, just as he said, just very quickly.
And when a two-by-four by eight costs almost eleven dollars a piece?
There were two, there were two dollars and thirty-four cents before.
Right.
And eight foot two by four.
Right. Seven?
You know, they're trying to, you know, there's, there's, there's gonna be a, I I mean, I believe there's gonna be a, a, there's a bump in the whole thing right now that's artificial. And and I think that at some point, that artificial bump will disappear and we'll go back to a little more reasonable price.
I don't know about plywood, you know, anything with with uh, with chemicals in it?
Glue.
I don't think it's gonna come down.
Yeah.
Because, because these companies make more money. And, you know, it was, the 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 chemical issues started back when um all the freeze came to Texas. They they had to rebuild all this stuff.
Well, the PVC pipe thing happened when, 'cause also in Texas, there was that that factory that burned down down there. And they were providing almost half of the PVC pipe in this country.
Yeah.
And that factory burned to the ground and I don't know that they've ever got it.
The 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 big distributors had it, they were selling what they had. Now now they gotta replenish their supplies.
Yeah.
And wood, when pandemic hit, the the, before the pandemic hit, the lodgers in in Canada would find an area that was getting infested with beetles, and they would go in and would cut the infested area out and basically surround an island that was clean. And then a year or two later, they would go in and cut that during the pandemic, because nobody could go out there, they weren't working anymore, they weren't able to create those islands anymore. And just went through and took out a lot of the, a lot of the wood, a lot of the standing woods, all beetle infected, infested. They've actually been cutting a lot of lumber from the States and sending it to Canada to get it milled. We don't have the, we don't have the capacity to mill it like they do up there. So it's going up and coming back.
Yeah.
That's the reason for cost increases. So, yeah, and, you know.
Yeah, so I, I mean.
My mother business relies on that.
So the basic point here, which we got way off on a tangent, was to try to uh help, maybe help Joe out with his explanations and
Yeah.
and um and what we've learned and and uh and maybe to modify his his approach just a little to help him understand the value, the value that we're getting for the money we're putting up. And um, um, and it's not, I don't think you could realistically claim that the value was in huge tax increases or anything like that. That's not what's gonna happen. What's gonna happen is we're gonna, is quality of life in the town will improve. That's what will happen.
It's it's a combination of things, you're right. Quality of life for the town, environmental life.
Yeah.
Main Street has a lot of wetlands on it.
Yeah.
And and it's just hard to put a good system in.
Yeah, so the environmental protection that we get and the quality of life improvement, so things need to be on the.
And you'll be able to get better services on Main Street also.
Yeah, well, that that's quality of life, so.
Yeah.
And you and you, while we do have some restaurants, we don't have a real high-end one, um, which we could possibly get.
In just the mix, in just the mixed-use thing.
We did have a couple, there's a couple of them that had approached us, a couple of them had approached us that ended up up over in Walker's Brook.
That's right.
'Cause they, this is back when we were in between administrators and I was running the office. They came and I, and they, and they were like ready to supply and they said, so uh who's who's in charge of your sewer, water and sewer? I'm like, uh, well, my clock doesn't water, but we don't have sewer. No sewer?
No sewer, bye-bye.
They went to Walker's Brook Drive instead.
All right.
So it's, yeah, um, Ryan, do you have any comments, sir?
Of course he does.
'Cause I think we're gonna wrap the meeting.
That's a wrap.
All right. Anything else, Daniel? Debbie?
Nope.
All right, it's a wrap.
Thanks, Phil.